I'm back to my kids venue.
Hi, yeah.
Mine is in mine shopping for any fashions. I'll show you what I have.
Frankie, that was.
Yeah.
Did you see that?
I know.
I call this meeting the Carrollton Farmers Branch ISD Board of Trustees to order at 7:04 PM on August 2nd, 2012, and welcome everybody back. I guess summer's almost over. Please join me in standing as James Goode leads the board's opening prayer.
Our Father, we are so thankful for this beautiful day you blessed us with, but especially for each day that we have the privilege to share this community with all of our community members, that we can be an active participant in all of the affairs of our community. We thank you, Father, that as we get close to the first day of school, that we, the board, can take this time to reflect upon our desires and goals for this coming year. Help us with the understanding and the wisdom how we can make the greatest impact for the academic achievement of all of our students. Give us the wisdom and understanding that all of our decisions will be able to reflect our understanding and our desire for the wishes of our community. And bless all of us, Father, as we strive to serve you each and every day of our lives. And this is our prayer in your loving Son's name. Amen.
Please remain standing as Richard Fleming leads the board in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
As a district, we dedicate all our efforts and resources to the education and preparation of all students. The board uses this mission to guide all deliberations, decisions, and actions. You will get to see all deliberations, decisions, and actions of the board in open session, with the exception of some items which may be discussed in a closed session as stipulated in the Texas Government Code, Section 551, commonly known as the Open Means Law. For the record, the entire board is here tonight, and we do constitute a quorum. I guess we're all rested from our July off and can conduct business on behalf of the district. At this time, we're at Agenda Item 1, Board Welcome and Recognitions. Welcome and Announcements, 1A, Dr. Burns.
Thank you, Ms. Klein. And I'll echo that to all board members, welcome back. We hope you enjoyed your vacation and ready to go back and earn all the dollars you make for serving, which is nothing, but we do appreciate your service and thank you for all that you do for this district. To our guest out there, thank you for joining us tonight. We know you've got other options like the Olympics, but they'll be on later, so you can watch the recap. But we do appreciate you being here with us tonight. We will begin our recognitions with our September meeting, as our traditional VIPs will begin in September, and we'll recognize our teachers at that time. So having said that, we do have a brief video of announcements for you tonight that we'll show regarding upcoming events in the district.
right around the corner. We at CFB ISD think this is going to be one of the best years in the history of our district. So get ready, ladies and gentlemen. The 2012-2013 school year kicks off bright and early on August 27th. Our pre-K students come back a week later on September 4th. For more information about Back to School, check out our special website at www.cfbisd.edu/Back. A week after we start school on Monday, September 3rd, the Carrollton Farmers Branch Schools and district offices will be closed in observance of Labor Day. Enjoy the holiday and be safe. That is it for our very short Welcome Back Board announcement. There will be a special board meeting for budget approval on Thursday, August 23rd, at 6:30 PM, right here at the CFB Administration Building. Our next regular school board meeting will take place on Thursday, September 6th, at 7:00 PM. Enjoy the rest of your summer, and we'll see you soon. And don't forget to visit www.cfbisd.edu for the latest information about the greatest school district in the state of Texas, the Carrollton Farmers Branch Independent School District. Good night.
Okay. Ms. Klein, members of the board, that concludes our announcements. We want to thank Mr. Wheeler from AMAT Academy to do that. He doesn't have any students yet, obviously. They're off for the summer, but we'll be looking forward to having students do the announcements for the rest of the school year or something.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. That brings us to Agenda Item Number 2, Report by Superintendent 2A, Presentation on Student Achievement, Summer School.
Yes, Ms. Klein. As this board is aware, we start each meeting with a presentation regarding our student achievement programs and things in the district that we are focusing on to continue to increase student achievement. And it's certainly appropriate at the beginning of school to talk about summer school, because although we've had a vacation for some, some students have been in class this summer, and many staff members have worked this summer to meet those students' needs. And so we always have quite an extensive summer school. We're very proud of the work that our staff does in summer school, as well as our students' effort that they provide in summer school. I always think it's interesting to say that in our summer school, the number of students is equal to many of the districts in the state of Texas, and that's how large we are. And so we operate a pretty complex system just in the summer school itself. So that being said, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Tracy Smith, our Assistant Superintendent for Elementary Schools, and she's going to present summer school program for 2012. Ms. Smith?
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here tonight. I am very excited to, first of all, introduce to you some of the hardworking staff, and these are the leaders today that were over our summer school program. First of all, a big thank you to administrative staff Kimberly Gwynn, and please stand when I call your name, and Pat Hester. They are the right arms that really helped to get the work done, and I appreciate them so much. Mr. Hester was also in charge of the ACT program, and he worked so hard, he had to take his vacation right now. High school, our principal was Chris Julian, assistant principals Michael Ariola, Kelly O'Sullivan, and Jeremy Harris. Fifth and eighth grade programs at Field this year, Susan Machado, principal, Alex Brown, assistant; Long, Lance Hamlin, principal, Bree Fox, assistant principal; Polk was Avianz Jones, principal; Steel Lane, assistant principal; and Barbara Bush Middle School, Jeffrey Waller, principal, and Erin Appeling, assistant principal. Our Exploration Academy principal was Robin Callahan; our Learning the Language principal, Kim Chow; Special Education coordinators were Kayla Daniel and Extended Year Program, Karen Ward. And just in case you didn't know, we still have summer school in session right now. We had one program that ended today, and that was the program that Ms. Daniel did with the Special Education and the Extended Year, which mostly are students that have profound needs and autism. They go a little bit longer. They go through next Thursday. And then our virtual campus, Dr. Barry Dodson. So if anybody had anything to do with summer school, please stand up, and that means anybody. Transportation, if you were food services, custodial, come on, Mr. Hibbs.
Pretty much everyone.
Personnel had something to do with it, but all of our payroll people had stuff to do with it and purchasing. We run an entire district in the summer, wanting you to know that. So thank you all very much for your help and support. Today, we want to tell you about our program and the importance of summer school. And I'm not going to read to you the majority of the slides, but this one is really important, and I want to make sure our viewing audience knows about this as well. During the school year, lower-income children's skills improve at close to the same rate as those of their more advantaged peers. And over the summer, middle and upper-income children's skills continue to improve while lower-income children's skills do not. There are really two factors that go into this. First of all, is the research that's tied to language acquisition. With our three-year-olds, they hear 2,153 words in an hour in homes of professionals versus 616 in homes of those with welfare. That is almost one-fourth of the words that you would hear. I've already given you more than the words that they would hear in an hour. And that is such a hard deficit for us to overcome. So our summer school programs give us those opportunities to provide that language and bathe the children in language. And the second part of that is going back to bullet one, and that's a testament to the teacher matters. If you're still thinking those children still hear those same number of words, but during the school year, we're able to keep the rich and the poor moving forward together at a great rate. This underscores the importance of providing a summer school program. I'm going to start this year talking about all of our programs and the numbers that we had. You can see the different programs that we had on the screen for a total of 4,151 students. To put that in perspective for you, RL Turner, a four-year comprehensive high school, has 2,194 students during the school year. So we had two RL Turners running during the summer school program. That's a huge endeavor. Getting teachers to give up their time over the summer for the good of our students is just monumental and so much appreciated. In fact, Dr. Burns alluded to the fact that our summer school program is larger than 800 school districts in the state of Texas. Say that again, our summer program, bigger than 800 school districts. And the other important thing you need to know is that these programs, except for three, are mandatory. The three school programs that are not mandatory are our traditional program, the ACT program, and Exploration Academy, and we'll talk a little bit more about those in a moment. Overall, we had much to be proud of this year. First of all, our curriculum totally revised this year. It was highly engaging. It was fun, and it was something that the coordinators put a great deal of time and effort into meeting the needs of all of our students to help them to be successful on EOC tests or at the beginning of the next school year. We were able this year to provide training two weeks prior to the beginning of the school year, and that way, the teachers knew the curriculum day one. They didn't receive it the day before and have to go in and teach. Secondly, we really worked with the fee structures. Again, because it's a mandatory program, we didn't feel that we could charge for some of those programs. It's just something we provided. So it is a cost that our constituents and you as a board put a lot of money into, and we appreciate it. But when it was non-mandatory, really, it is important for the children to create a love of learning and to keep that learning fresh. So we wanted to make the fee structure manageable for those students. And last year, our enrollment has changed. We did not offer programs for third and fourth grade students this year and sixth and seventh grade students, but we still had more students come than what we did last year. Our program highlights for traditional summer school are that we gained 1,409 half credits this year. If you put all of that together, that means that 704 high school students, if they just needed one credit, they would now be able to walk the stage. 704 students, and that's almost the entire graduating class from all four high schools. Combination of students, excuse me, sorry. With that, it was a combination of students who experienced difficulty and those students who were wanting to get ahead. So we offered two types of programs in our traditional summer school. If a student didn't quite master the curriculum, they had a second opportunity to take that class. In addition, there were classes like PE, Health, Speech, and things like that, that they could get ahead on credits so that they could perhaps spend more time in athletics or band or something further down the way. One of the highlights was, the theme was knock it out of the park. And each and every day, students participated in sustained silent reading. All of the research shows that students excel when they are reading, so we had a very focused program for them. The new piece to summer school and the piece that was fun to manage was our EOC camp. EOC goes along with that end-of-course exam that all of our ninth graders took in the ending part of the year. Imagine, if you will, trying to plan a summer school, not knowing exactly what was tested on the test, not knowing what the scores were, not knowing how many students would attend, and trying to put together a great program for them. Well, our high school summer school people did that. We had a chance of having 2,500 students come to our program. Just because if you figured a 75% passing rate, we might have had that number. But instead, we ended up with 683 individual students in our EOC camp. That's almost a third of the entire freshman class from our district attending summer school. We had three sessions a day. Teachers worked from 7:15 to 4:45 every day in order to make sure that we had the services needed for the students, and there was a real sense of urgency on the part of students and staff. Here, this slide shows you the tests or the classes that we offered during summer school and also the tests that we administered during the week of July 9th. The ones that are in the black print are the five exams that all freshmen had to take. Geometry and physics, we had some students who were advanced and took those classes, so that's why the numbers were so much smaller there. But we had 1,238 students or individual retests. It might not have been students, as some students may have taken more than one. With that, we averaged 90 administrators per day. Unfortunately, I can't share with you how many of those students were successful on the exams. Those test results still have not come in. Hopefully, they'll be in next week, and we hope to be able to celebrate quite a few of those 1,236 students, not just meeting minimum, but achieving the satisfactory mark on their scores. We also revamped our ACT program. The ACT program is for those students who are in our District AEP, and we wanted them to have the chance to return to their home campus. We increased the program from 15 to 30 days this year to enable more students to return back to the campus on the first day. You know, and I know, that if you don't start with your friends on the campus that you're going to attend, especially if you're a ninth grader, on day one, you feel lost, you feel left behind. So we were able to bring 48 students into our ACT program, and 34 of them successfully completed the time requirements that they needed to return to their home campus. Mr. Hester and his staff made a minimum of three phone calls or more to every parent to try to get the students up to school and to make sure that they were successful. I think I skipped one. Nope, excuse me. With Exploration Academy, we had a new curriculum that went in with two classes, Going Buggy and Snapshots. The students really enjoyed those two classes. I don't think I wanted to be in the Going Buggy classes because they had critters everywhere. Mr. Hibbs, we got them all out before the day was over, so that's a good thing. And with some of those classes, with the Snapshots and the Art of Math, the students actually worked in combination with the Educational Foundation and produced artwork for their cards. You'll notice in front of you today that Ms. Callahan brought for you a sample of those cards as appreciation, and those cards are being sold through the Education Foundation to help earn money to fund scholarships. And so we're very excited about that, that not only did we give the students a fun, exciting curriculum, but we also taught them the importance of helping others. In addition, they created a video to show classes in action, and it's going to be a recruiting tool. They already have students who want to sign up for next year. So this is one of our programs that is not mandatory. It pays for itself, and it is a great boon for our district because people want to come. With our Learning the Language program, we streamlined the curriculum, and the Pied Piper, you all, if you haven't been to Learning the Language, and I know many of you have, the Pied Piper is a program that really helps through music, through songs, through dance, movement, for the students to learn English. Last year, we had one day where all the parents were invited, and we had a packed house. This year, Ms. Chow decided, you know what? Let's see what happens if we have four open houses with the Pied Piper. Every single one of the four days was standing room only in the gym at Carrollton Elementary and Cafeteria, and we were so excited to see all the parents who were so pleased to see their students learning. And I'll leave you tonight with pictures of our students having a wonderful time at our Learning the Language program.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Board members, we'll answer any questions that you might have. I think that it's a testament to this district's commitment to high achievement for kids is that we put just as much effort and energy into summer school as we do the regular school year. We believe in it. We think that it does make a difference for kids, and so these people out there in the audience who's working, there's not any less energy put into the summer as there is during the regular school year. Sometimes when I'm out, people always ask, what are you guys doing this summer? I said, don't even get me started. We've got all day, we'll talk about it. So anyway.
Board members, are there any comments or questions? We appreciate your presentation. It was quite informative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for what y'all do. At this time, Dr. Burns suggested we take a break.
We may not want one.
We may not want one since it's 7:25. Board, do y'all want a break?
No.
No? Y'all want to keep going?
Yes.
Okay, well, I've been, Dr. Burns, you've been overruled.
Okay. I'm fine.
But I will say-
Just got back, and you need a break already.
Before moving on to the next agenda item, I'd like to remind the audience that the board encourages comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak, either as an individual or as a representative of a group, may do so during the next agenda item, which is 3A, Audience for Guests. The board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than three minutes. So anybody want to speak to Audience for Guests? Ms. Grivener, do you have any?
No, I just not.
We'll see her for a minute in case somebody wants to run over and grab one.
Anybody running out to grab one?
Nah.
Okay, so that being said, that takes us to Item 3B, Consent Agenda. We're trying something new. Consent Agenda is a mechanism that the board uses to approve a number of routine items together with a single vote. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the public notes for this meeting includes the list of all consent agenda items, and the board has been provided ample information about these items in advance. Prior to any action taken on the consent agenda, board members may request withdrawal of individual items for clarification or discussion. Board members, are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda at this time? Frank, I mean, Mr. Shore?
I need that we move 39 and 40 to the consent agenda.
And then, in the meantime, are there any motions on the remaining consent agenda items? Ms. Chaffin?
Ms. Klein?
Oh, I need a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I'm out of rhythm.
Okay. You're first. I recommend that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. All those in favor? All those opposed, that is unanimous. Mr. Shore, you pulled Items 39 and 40?
Yes. I asked that we pull 39 and 40 because I think this deals with possibly restricting access to some athletic fields that we have. The issue in my mind appears to be maintaining the quality of the fields for the benefit of the teams that practice there in our school district versus access to the fields and facilities by the general public. And those are two legitimate competing interests. And I'd ask that the staff, that, Dr. Burns, you have your staff bring this back to us with more information and some more data.
Okay.
One of the pieces of information that I would like to have is what do other school districts do regarding making their facilities available or not for community members? That's something I'd be interested in knowing about.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. Board members, any comments? Or, well, Dr. Burns, is tabling the right wording to use?
Yeah, I think we just probably take no action on it tonight as a board, just take no action. Mr. Hyatt and his group will come back, we'll do some more research and gather some more information. I think Mr. Shore has a great suggestion. We need to look around, because we do compete with these surrounding districts, and just like we compete academically, we want to compete on the other arenas as well, and if they're doing something that's a better practice, then we need to know about it. So we will do that homework and then bring that back to you. There's no urgency, obviously, right away to do this, but it is an ongoing issue regarding field maintenance, and it is a cost, and so it's something that we feel obligated to always bring you back ways that maybe help save money, but there is a balance with restriction to the community, as Mr. Shore pointed out. So we're fine, we'll bring this back at a later date and for some more consideration.
Thank you. Item 3C is approval of board meeting calendar for 2012-2013. Dr. Burns?
Yes, Ms. Klein, members of the board, in your board information, you have this year's calendar laid out for you, the regular board meetings, which will occur on the first Thursday of every month, with the exception of January, and obviously, we don't have meetings in July. So those dates are laid out for you for your calendar, as well as the work-study dates. As you recall, the board has six work-studies each year. We take a particular topic and kind of delve deeper into it and discuss at a deeper level things that we need to do to improve in that area or to change in that area. Those are also listed for you as well. After tonight, when you take action on this calendar, Ms. Grivener will actually put you together a complete board meeting calendar that has not only our board meeting dates and the work-studies, but the other additional things that board members need to be aware of, like the North Texas Association meetings, the TASB conventions, and those meetings. So we'll try to be comprehensive in that calendar for you once you get tonight's calendar approved, so.
Thank you, Dr. Burns. Board members, are there any, is there any action anyone would like to take regarding the calendar?
I actually have a comment regarding it.
Okay.
I noticed that one of the work-studies dealt with the Irving Tiff. It's interesting how that got plugged in, and I'm really anxious to hear the information of that work-study.
Yeah. Well, that was one of the things in our process that emerged as an interest in-
You're from the staff.
I think you'll be intrigued by that.
I'm looking forward to it.
That's right. You've got a long time to anticipate it, because it's the last one.
I recall, I think it's next summer.
Yeah, it's the last one, so.
I believe there's an opportunity to discuss a sizable amount of money that's sitting there, we have an opportunity to do something with. And anytime money's involved, I know we have detailed discussions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ms. Klein, are you looking for a motion? I sure am, Ms. Chaffin. May I have one? Yes, please. Ms. Klein, I move that we approve the board meeting calendar for 2012-2013 as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Chaffin.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Watten. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous. 3D, consider endorsement of nominees to TASB Board of Directors to represent Region 10 positions A and D. Is that ours to present?
That is yours, Ms. Klein.
Mr. Goode, would you like to tackle this one?
Oh, I'd be happy to.
Okay.
There are two positions for Region 10 that we have an opportunity to make recommendations for. One is for a three-year term, which is currently held by Karen Ellis, and I think probably everybody on the board here knows Karen over the many years from Richardson ISD. The other position was a position held by a gentleman by the name of Keith Foisey, and he was defeated at the May election. And so his position- And so his position is now open for one year. And four people have expressed an interest in serving in that capacity. And of course, you have all the information on those four individuals. And all that I can do is make a recommendation based upon my experience, who I would like to propose to serve that one-year term.
That would be appropriate for starting the discussion. Thank you.
Okay. You want me to give you the name?
Yes.
So you'll understand. It's a gentleman by the name of Don Gant from De Soto ISD. He's been actively involved, I think, for about 12 years on his local board. He's a graduate of Tasby Leadership, I believe, from two years ago. And he's been extremely involved at, not only the local level, but, once you've been exposed to Tasby Leadership, you really start changing your perspective on what you look at and how you view things, which is what Tasby Board's all about. Because you can't look at your individual board and say, I'll vote according to my individual board. You have to vote according to 1,034 school districts in the state of Texas. And so I would recommend Don Gant to serve that position, and we make that recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Board members, is there any other discussion? Any other comments? Any other opinions?
Don is obviously a really good guy. Been around a long time. Missy Bender has done a really good job as well in Plano. So she is another very, very well-qualified candidate.
You are exactly correct. Let me make an observation as to why I did not recommend Missy. Currently, the four Region 10 board members, myself, Richardson, Plano, Garland, and DISD, we are all from large school districts. We need to have someone who represents the smaller districts in Region 10.
I agree. You're absolutely right.
That's a good idea.
So I think we have some general agreement. Is there any other item anybody on the board would like to do? Make a motion?
Missy's the only one that I was, the only other.
Can you pull your microphone down, Ms. Watten?
Oh, sure.
Missy Bender was the only other candidate that I was interested in, but I agree that we need representation from a smaller district.
Would you like for me to make a motion now?
Yes, I would.
I move that we endorse Don Gant for Region 10 Tasby Representative.
I'd like to second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Fleming. So we have a motion, a second. All those in favor? All those opposed? Thank you. I appreciate your information on that, Mr. Goode, because some of that was helpful to me in voting. Thank you. 3E is consider designation of voting delegate and alternate delegate to Tessa Tasby General Conference.
Ms. Klein, if I may?
Yes, Ms. Chaffin?
I have been the perennial delegate for Carrollton Farmer's Branch for, I'm not sure exactly how many years. And as we looked at our budget this year, one of the things that we discussed was reducing our expenses associated with training. And I chose to attend summer leadership in San Antonio this year. And as a result of that and the fact that I will be physically not prepared to deal with the convention this year, I'm not going, so you don't get to pick me. But I would like to nominate Frank Shore as our delegate and John Matthews as our assistant, as our associate delegate.
And that would follow our tradition.
Yes, it would.
Of our newest board member being appointed as a delegate in training.
As the alternate delegate, right.
So.
One of the things that occurs during these delegate conferences is that, as a statewide body, we look at the things that affect education across the state, not just this district, but as Mr. Goode was talking about, from a statewide perspective. And we work to set the agenda of what the Texas Association of School Boards will lobby for on the next coming legislative sessions and where we put our focus. And so it really is an important function. It's an important role to go there and represent our district and to make sure that if we have issues and concerns that need to be heard at that level, that we have someone who is knowledgeable enough to stand up and do that. And so I believe that Mr. Shore is well-prepared for that role, and I would recommend him this year.
Well, I'll look to this side of the table and see, is there anybody down here that is offended or hurt by this motion?
I am truly honored that I get to sit by Mr. Shore at the Delegate Assembly Meeting.
Well, I'll just.
Mr. Shore?
This summer, I had the privilege of serving in the Legislative Action Committee for Tasby. And they admonished us at that meeting, make certain that you go back to your school board and lobby to be the Tasby delegate. None of you have heard me do that because I was mum regarding that. But I'm honored to be nominated. This'll shock you. Some of the resolutions that Tasby is advocating have been polished by one of your seven. And so I'm familiar with the advocacy points, and I'm honored that you think that I'm worthy of this. So unlike last time where I declined to serve a position, I'm honored by this.
And I think we have a motion. Are we waiting on a second, Ms. Scrivener?
Yes, you're.
I second. Ms. Watten will second that. All those in favor? I'll just say, Mr. Matthews, I hope Mr. Shore shows up for your sake. So, thank you, board.
Also honored.
It's a form of hazing.
I think.
I'm sorry.
What was the vote on that?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
3F, review, update, reaffirm board standards of professional practice.
Ms. Klein, as you recall from the previous meeting, you asked the administration to help, I think, Mr. Goode, who was delegated to be your, the board designated to review.
I think he volunteered.
Yeah, he volunteered in absentia. But he did volunteer, and so we have given him the revisions per your direction, and I think he's prepared to present those revisions and ask the board to reaffirm its procedure. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Goode.
Very good. I am honored to be associated with the standards of professional practice. There were three changes that are being submitted, and you have those in your documents, but I will restate them. On page three of our practices, we are revising the notation that generally our board meeting is held on the first Thursday of the month, not the second. So that was one revision. And then the next one is something we just did, and that is how we develop the board agenda and how we vote on it. So let me clarify this by just putting it this way. The verbiage has been modified, that is, under the section Developing the Board Agenda, which allows for omission of the practice of announcing each item on the consent agenda before we take action. Now, because this list of consent agenda items is part of the public notice, and board members are always given ample time and information to become informed prior to the meeting, this practice is really no longer needed. And then the third one is on page 20 of our practices, and this is revising a notation under Board Development Advocacy. And this regards continuing education credit that board members accumulate throughout the year. And it is submitted in there that a monthly public record of continuing education hours received by the board members will begin with the June 2013 board meeting, which is, of course, in compliance with Board Policy, BBD Local. And those are the three changes.
Thank you, Mr. Goode. Is there any discussion on that item? Is there any action? Mr. Goode?
I move that we accept our, the restatement of the changes to our standards of professional practice as presented.
I appreciate your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I just want to, as presented means as amended.
Amended, as I read, yes.
These are the revisions that you've been presenting.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. All those in favor? All those opposed? That is unanimous.
Yeah, and Ms. Klein, and members of the board, as Ms. Scrivener gets those revised, I guess, it's not permanently, but revised in ink, we'll post those on your SharePoint for your information, as well as if you'd like a hard copy, the whole thing will be provided for you if you want one, so.
Agenda item four, comments from board members. For A, comments regarding posted agenda items. Mr. Shore?
I just want to comment on why one of the revisions to our practices as a board doesn't come into play till June 2013. And that's to give everybody, current board members and anybody who is contemplating becoming a board member, the opportunity to be in compliance with the continuing education that we're supposed to receive. And that's the reason it's deferred to 2013.
Thank you, Mr. Shore. It is only 7:44, so yes, Mr. Goode?
I have a comment to make also.
Late.
Yes, Mr. Goode.
I'm stretching it maybe, that it's really directly regarding this agenda, but I thought it would be, you would appreciate this. Yesterday morning, Farmer's Branch Chamber of Commerce had branch out, which it does every Wednesday morning. Mr. Fleming and I were there, and the guest speakers were four students from the Metza Academy. And it was just an exceptional presentation on project-based learning by those four students. They articulated, I was so impressed, the quality of their articulation on project-based learning. And we were definitely thrilled. As always, the one thing that frustrates you, Dr. Burns, you can relate to this, the people in the audience always say, I didn't know a thing about this. And I'm thinking, we have been preaching and preaching, and yet they never remember. Therefore, I hope, Dr. Burns, we might suggest that they consider the other academies to come and speak to them at branch out. Because it was very well-received by the people there, all of the business people who were there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Agenda item five, closed meeting is authorized under Texas Government Code, including but not limited to Section 551.071. Dr. Burns, do we have any closed-session items?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Item six, reconvene to vote on matters considering closed session. Don't need to do that. So adjourning, it looks like. We might have, I don't know if this is a record.
It's going to be close, I think, to a record.
If you'll just get to it.
Hey, I hate to rush anything. Hearing none and seeing none, by my determination, we've reached the end of our agenda, and we adjourned without even a break, Dr. Burns.
I know.
At 7:47 PM. Thank y'all.
Well done.
Absolutely. Frank, I cannot find, I don't know how to find.